Hey, Rick. I don't see a pen up here. If there's an extra, you can throw me.
There.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
He may even even borrow it.
The Tuesday, October 6th, 2020 meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to read an open podium invitation. Open podium is something that we avail to our citizens' residents at each of our council meetings. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government. Prior to each council meeting, which are typically held the first and third Tuesday of each month from 6:30 to 6:55 PM here in the council chambers. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412 by noon of the meeting date, giving your name, your phone number, and subject matter to help us be better prepared for you. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please contact the city manager's office. As all of you sitting here tonight realize, we are definitely still in the midst of our COVID restrictions, and I always like to have a shot real quickly just for people watching at home that we also are socially distancing here in the chambers. Typically, in the last couple of meetings, some of us who feel more comfortable will take our masks off when we're addressing everyone with the microphone. That's per governor's directions as well, as long as we're socially distanced. I think there's every now and then with COVID fatigue setting in there, as many of you have experienced in your families, sometimes there's that renewed sense of, you know, let's buckle back down again. I think with the news of the last week, I think that's a feeling I'm picking up across the country that we're going to buckle back down. If you think about it, if people were concerned about the virus back in March and April, which we were, and many of us were, you know, washing our hands until they became raw, you know, each day and just being so faithful, and then we start to, you know, lessen a little bit and slack off a little bit. But the virus is, I'm making this up, but I'm probably close, 10 times more out there in the world today than it was six months ago. So whatever we were feeling in terms of urgency six months ago, we ought to renew a commitment to that. So going to try to, it's sliding down on me, as you can see, I'm going to try to keep this on tonight as much as I can. Just a little explanation there. All right, we have, let's see, an acceptance, a presentation, I guess, but an acceptance of a donation as well. So Mr. Gettrill.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. We do, we have a $6,000 donation that the Crime Fund Prevention received. Our police chief, Greg Weber, will be providing a presentation.
Just a little background on this donation. You know, we were just speaking of COVID, and, you know, unfortunately, so many of the outreach things that we as employees try and do with the community have had to be canceled justifiably. So Safety Camp, Citizens Academy, Night to Night, those things, we just couldn't do this year. And Comcast has always generously donated $5,000 a year towards the Safety Camp program. And again, this year, because they couldn't donate to Safety Camp, they elected to make a donation along with Shields for a total of $6,000, where we were able to buy a bunch of sporting goods equipment and go out and meet with some kids and try and brighten their day or bring a little bit of joy to their lives because they're dealing with this pandemic as well. So there is nobody here from Shields or Comcast. I know the Crime Prevention Fund president is here tonight.
Who would like to speak?
Did you want to say anything?
You do so much good volunteer work. Please do step up and at least be greeted and thanked.
Do you need my name and address?
Sure.
Lisa Toomey, 14302 Stratford Road, Eden Prairie. No, I actually had a chance to attend, and it was a really good day. I think the officers, the kids had a great time. I think the officers did too. They got off their buses and just, they showed the pictures, and all the sporting goods were there, and they just had a good time. And yeah, I'd like to thank Comcast again for their generous donation and Shields as well, and you guys. It was, look how much fun they had. It was great. The pogo sticks went first.
No kidding. No, it really is a substantial donation, so really, thank you so much to both Comcast and to Shields. And thank you, Lisa, for all the work you do. You are a volunteer extraordinaire, so appreciate all your volunteering to our community. How many years have you been head of the crime plan?
I've been on the Fund for 12 and President for five.
Nice, thank you. So we do need a motion to accept this donation.
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $5,000 from the Eden Prairie Crime Prevention Fund that was donated from Comcast and $1,000 worth of equipment, which was donated from Shields Sporting Goods. The donations were used to purchase sporting goods for local youth.
I second that.
Excellent. I'm assuming no discussion. You can interrupt me if there is. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, thank you. We do, I believe that's it tonight. Often, we'll have a few more presentations or proclamations. Let's move on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any items to question, to add, to pull temporarily anybody? Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move.
For second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, we have two minutes of both the Tuesday, September 15th workshop and also council meeting. Any questions about either one or any reason to divide them? If not, if I could have a motion to approve both of them?
I move to approve the agenda.
Nope.
Nope.
Following city, council minutes, item six, sorry.
I'll move to approve the following city council minutes. Council workshop held Tuesday, September 15th, 2020, and the city council meeting held Tuesday, September 15th, 2020.
For second.
Second.
Any, again, any thing to ask or question? No? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. So we're really, I am personally, but I'm sure all of us are really excited tonight to have a report of the Housing Task Force. This is something really that came, really came out of the campaign a while back, but also especially moved ahead over the last year, and then just so excited that we had a great group of people that got together and had Joan Halpulis lead this. So, Mr. Gettrill, I think I'll turn it over to you, and you can intro it from here.
Thank you, Mayor. That's a good introduction. I believe it was in the spring of 2019, U.S. city council members appointed several residents of what you see here tonight to a Housing Task Force to spend a year or more, give or take, examining so many issues around, surrounding housing and affordable housing in Eden Prairie. And I don't want to steal the show in terms of all the material that they're going to provide you. They've done a lot of work, and they've done a lot of research, and they have a lot to share with you. So the floor is theirs tonight. I'd like to introduce, as you mentioned, Mayor, the chair of the task force, Joan Halpulis, and I believe she'll be leading the group through a presentation. And then they, just, I just want to mention really quick, the only action tonight is that you accept the report. Much of what you hear tonight involves a lot of future action that it sounds, that it looks as if you'll be considering in the coming year or two.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to try to do this keeping this mask on, so please let me know if you can't understand me, so.
You're pretty distant, so if you really do feel more comfortable, do take it off.
Yeah.
You're more than 15 feet from anyone, I think.
Okay. Other folks are coming into this space to do this because we're sharing the presentation.
Thank you.
So I just want to be mindful of the people who are following me in this airspace here. So hello, Mayor, council members. I am really excited to be here with you tonight with my fellow task force members, and we are here tonight to present to you the work that we've done over the past year and a couple of months and make our recommendations to you officially and sadly finish our time together officially.
We can reappoint you.
Really, really excited that we're there.
Part two.
Okay, so I'm going to just get right to it because we've got a lot to present, and we want to make sure that the areas of our report that you haven't heard as thoroughly as others get to have some more space from the task force members. So various members of the task force will come up here to present different aspects of the report, and I'm going to start. We wanted to start with the foundation of our report, which was really inspired by our ASPIRE 2040 Plan. We took a lot of cues from that housing chapter in the ASPIRE Plan, and so throughout this report, you're going to see some of our main goals highlighted from the 2040 Plan and how these recommendations will address those goals. So housing is the foundation of any community. It helps to determine the health and vibrancy of a community, and we know this through so many different ways that our community has spoken to us about the need for, you know, really good, affordable, and decent housing in order to stay and be part of this community here in Eden Prairie. So without further ado, we'll start with the first recommendations of our report. So the task force is going to make recommendations in these areas. Inclusionary housing policy, which you've already heard a whole lot about, housing opportunities in proximity to new public transit, housing, the Housing Trust Fund, NOAA preservation, tenant protection ordinances, senior housing. We've got some out-of-the-box strategies for you to consider, and communications. So first, inclusionary housing policy. Inclusionary housing policy will address the major goal in goal number one of our ASPIRE Plan, which is to incentivize attainable, affordable housing options for lower-income households so they can move to and remain in Eden Prairie. Our first recommendation for inclusionary housing policy. So this task force strongly recommends the adoption and enforcement of an Eden Prairie inclusionary housing policy. And this first part of the recommendations, because there are four in total for inclusionary housing, this first part really is the, basically, what we see that many other communities are doing. It's sort of the central way in which really great housing, inclusionary housing policy happens. We are making this recommendation for several reasons, not the least of which is that if we have an actual inclusionary housing policy in place and enforceable, then every time a new development project comes in, the developers know where they stand with us, and we actually have a policy through which we can negotiate what happens in creating development and sort of levels the playing field for anybody coming into the city. It also will help us quite a bit to avoid a lot of protracted negotiations that could cost developers money, cost the city time and money. So we, these are basically the policies, the inclusionary policies that we'd like to see happen. You can see in this chart, triggers for multifamily projects, the requests for licenses, permits, including PUD zoning, comp plan change, or city financial assistance, and for single-family developments, requests for licenses, permits, including PUD zoning or comp plan change or city financial assistance. So inclusionary policy gets triggered when a developer comes in and needs something from the city to make it happen. Project types, under multifamily, you'd want, we'd want to have this trigger with new and rehabilitation and redevelopment properties for which the trigger is at, and on single-family, new and, for new properties, rehabilitation would not be part of this, and that's, so that's a mistake on this slide, and I wanted to make sure I pointed that out. It should be taken off. Development size applies for multifamily to developments of 15 or more units, and the same for a single-family. And then inclusionary unit requirement. Here's where we get like a really great set of options for developers if they want to make 5% of the units at 30% of area median income as this policy, or they could choose 10% of their units at 50% of area median income, or 15 at 60% of area median income. So the choice is up to the developer. And then under single-family, the developer option would be 10% or 100, at 120% of AMI, area median income. And we're also suggesting that there could be a buyout option, a fee, which the city would determine that as we go. And then for terms, we are recommending in perpetuity with a buyout option for the developer at the end, if they were going to be turning over the property to somebody else, they could buy out that option, and for a single-family, that's, there's, it's not applicable. So these are the things that we see our neighbors doing in communities, and we think we should be doing it too. The second inclusionary policy recommendation that we have is we strongly recommend that the city encourage multifamily developments to be comprised of 100% affordable housing units. The major rationale for this is that our lots that are, our infill lots that are here and that are still available in Eden Prairie are few, and they're small, and so the projects that would be developed on those sites would themselves be in close proximity to housing of various income levels. So we don't feel that we need to worry about having 100% affordable in a particular development because they're right next to other neighborhoods. The rationale in the past about making sure that it's like 20% or 30% of the housing would be inclusionary and the rest wouldn't be was so that we weren't putting 100% affordable in one spot and kind of isolating folks. But we don't think that that is something that, what we have left to develop in Eden Prairie, this would not be an issue there. And of course, we want to meet our goals on developing more affordable housing in Eden Prairie. So if we have a developer that wants to come in to do 100% affordable project, we think we should encourage that. And by the way, those folks that are developers that do those projects, typically, that's their mission in the world to do them. They know what they're doing. They know how to support that housing. They know where it's, where it's good to put them. So we want to encourage the city to consider 100% affordable.
Can you, for people listening, the 60% average median income, what approximately is that number in Eden Prairie? I assume we're up to $60,000, $70,000?
I think our area median income in Eden Prairie is $100,000?
For a family of four, it probably is roughly about $60,000.
Okay, thanks.
So we're talking about people who go to work, make decent money.
Yeah.
Like, that are living in a lot of single-family homes today as well.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it's not just people not earning anything, essentially.
Oh, no, no, no.
I think that's important for people to understand that it could be people doing quite well, they're just not ready to move into a house yet.
Correct, yep. And, you know, to be frank, many Americans are spending more than 30% of their take-home income on their housing, and that's sort of the definition of like where we'd want us to all be. So if you're making 60% of the area median income in order to live in Eden Prairie, we're going to need to make sure that some of our housing stock can accommodate that.
Thank you.
Yeah. So number three, the task force recommends that landlords be required to accept tenant-based assistance, including housing choice and Section 8 vouchers and elder waivers for affordable housing, which is created pursuant to Eden Prairie's inclusionary housing policy. This is really important because we want to incentivize landlords to accept these vouchers. It's good money. It's the same money that the landlords would be getting if they were, it was totally coming from the tenant. And if somebody is eligible for Section 8 vouchers, housing choice, or elder waivers, and they can find a home here in Eden Prairie, we want to, we want to encourage that. And fourth, the task force recommends that the developers provide and follow affirmative, fair housing market plans for developments to which the inclusionary housing policy applies. And this is really, you know, kind of the icing on the cake of this, which is that once we've got a project going and the developers creating some inclusionary housing in that project, we want to make sure that they're using, you know, all of the, using affirmative practices to advertise that to people, to make sure that the people that are eligible for this know about it, can apply for it, and get in there. And the nice part about this is these, these inclusionary housing policies, I mean, this affirmative, fair housing market plans are readily available, and people that are creating affordable housing know about this, but as we bring developers in and they're going to do some inclusionary housing, they may not understand how to do this, but these plans are really available, like easily available, and can be included in marketing plans for the developers. So we want to make sure that we, we kind of have that in as part of the agreement with the developers when we get there.
Joan, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
Back on number three.
Yeah.
Just a curious question there. So it's the first time I've really, I guess, thought about requiring the Section 8 piece, and I just wonder at that point, and we can have Jonathan or others maybe check this out if you all did not, but I would want to know who in the area has mandated that. I think that's unique. This is new to me. And then across the United States of America, I'm guessing that's fairly rare. Joan, to your point, it is real money. There are other issues that come with that, but then the elderly waiver is not real money coming, and that would be a financial hit to some of these senior homes because then they are, it's a gamble, right, in how long someone lives, and if they run out of money, then they have to fund that for the rest of the years of life of that person. It's a great thing. I'm not suggesting that, and that's where we've mandated in some of these senior buildings, we've gotten five units, elderly waiver, that kind of a thing. But to mandate that they, I don't know what that means exactly, that they would take all elderly waiver applications, I mean, they would, that would not be financially sustainable. So I'm just curious what, what other cities have done, and then how much, if that was thrown, I'm not suggesting it was thrown in late, but if it was thrown in, how much back study is on those two points, and if we, well, let me ask just from a technical, logistical, are they done tonight? Are we sending people back for additional questions, or is it coming, is it coming from staff at this point?
Yeah, it would come from staff, Mayor.
Okay, then to staff, then I would want to know more about both of those in terms of what other communities are doing and what has worked, and, and then I'd like to have the council understand for sure the implications and ramifications of both of those. So, okay, thank you.
Yeah, fair enough, fair enough. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so now I'm going to move to, we're going to move to housing opportunities in proximity to new public transit.
Hi, I'm Terri Farley, and I'm going to be presenting the next two sections. I'm going to try to do it with a mask, so if you can't hear me say something, because I'm routinely told that people can't hear me, so. First, the task force recognized that with the light rail coming in, we have a unique one-time opportunity to do development around that light rail. And while the recommendation here is a bit different than any of the other recommendations since it really relates to a specific project, we thought we would be remiss if we didn't address it. Really, what this recommendation is saying is that we think that the city should take a holistic approach when we're looking at the developments around the light rail. We would suggest that we look at making the housing development there entirely affordable, that it have space designed especially for seniors, that it could be a place to also use some of the out-of-the-box strategies you'll hear about later, like the micro-units or perhaps family, larger family sizes. We also suggest that as we're looking at that development, we look at it as kind of a community and that we allow mixed use so that the residents there not only can use the light rail, but they can also walk to grocery stores, to pharmacies, that perhaps there be coffee shops where they can meet each other and have a community. We also recognize that really one of the benefits of being by primary transportation is perhaps a greener space, the ability to live without one, two, or three cars. But to do that, we would also need to look at that development in connection with supplemental transportation. You know, perhaps it's car sharing, zip cars, bike sharing, putting buses in place or shuttles in place so that people who are residents can go to the senior center or to the church or to the school, so they can participate fully in Eden Prairie without even having a car. And so, you know, like I said, it's really a holistic approach. How can we enable people living in this housing development to participate fully and yet take advantage of this light rail to the fullest? We also suggest that there are learnings from other communities, notably Hopkins, in terms of things that work and things that didn't work, that we would suggest the city, Jonathan, Rick, evaluate and take into account when we look at that. So it's short, it's sweet, but it's an opportunity not to be wasted. And then, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This is the second goal, working in partnership to help envision and finance innovative housing demonstration projects and development. The task force strongly recommends that, like many of the other communities in the state, that Eden Prairie adopt a housing trust fund. At its most basic, a housing trust fund is a trust with money deposited for the purpose of housing, and in this case, affordable housing. The monies coming in would come from a variety of sources. It could come from the deed and lieu payments that Joan alluded to earlier. It could come from pooled TIFs. It could come from private donors. It could come from corporate donors. The state of Minnesota has made noises in the past about contributing monies to city trust funds. You know, perhaps that would happen. We also understand that in Eden Prairie, there is actually a bank account set up for housing purposes, and that could be used as seed money for the trust fund. It's important to note that especially for donors, private donors and big corporate donors like a Wells Fargo or a US Bank, that the protections and requirements of a trust fund are important. That can be in their donation requirements. It basically gives them a lot of confidence that the monies they are providing can be, can and will be used for the purposes they care about. It's also important to donors that their contributions be tax deductible, and I think we brought this up and discussed it at a session earlier with you guys. These funds can be used for a variety of purposes. The trust, the task force recommends that we work with partners, both large and small, to basically utilize funds from a trust fund to acquire land, renovate NOAA properties, build new properties, you know, housing-related purposes. And we're not saying that the city should own land because we don't think the city should own land, and again, that came out pretty loud and clear in one of our meetings. But that being said, the trust fund would allow us to do things like the city of Bloomington just did. They just used $17 million from their housing trust fund to support a development with Aon, which is creating 486 affordable units over off of Cedar Avenue in Bloomington. Now, that's something we could do. We could also use monies to help nonprofits like Habitat for Humanity, you know, or Homes Within Reach, build homes, one, three, five homes. Within Reach, build homes, one, three, five homes here in Eden Prairie. Both of those organizations have let us know very recently, as we were doing the research here, that one of the prohibitive factors to working in Eden Prairie is land prices. We could help support that. Housing trust fund monies could be used also to buy up the number of affordable units in developments. You know, as Joan had mentioned earlier, there are requirements of a certain number of units. We could subsidize that and get more units in. We could also do, do things for our citizens directly. You know, there are some gaps between what Prop does and what some of the community churches do. And it obviously depends on what the language of the trust fund itself says we can do, but those are all possibilities that we could utilize trust funds to advance housing in Eden Prairie. As I just mentioned, it does depend in part on what the trust documentation says. We recommend that Eden Prairie adopt a short, sweet version, a St. Louis Park-type version of a trust fund, to give the city ultimate flexibility in terms of what and how it wants to use it, use the monies, relating to housing, of course, and kind of an easy, quick process to access them. There are other forms out there. ADINA has a very lengthy form that has a lot of committees and red tape around it. Again, we suggest short and sweet, giving us maximum flexibility. And the second recommendation is really around administration. The task force recognizes that city staff has the expertise to administer the trust fund. I mean, certainly they're in the front lines and they, they have the best insight and ability to know what to spend the money on, when to spend it, how much money to spend. You mean, there's a lot of expertise there, and we recognize that. But we also recognize that there are other administrative components to having a trust fund. There's setting up the accounts, there's the audit, there's reporting, there's filings, there's, there's a lot of administrative, ministerial things that go with a trust fund. And there's also an opportunity to market and ask for donations in a way that's a little bit different than typical. And again, we think that the staff has the expertise to do that, but the task force also recognizes that there are only 24 hours in a day, and, you know, sometimes only 24 hours in a working day. And we wanted to ensure that the staff explore options to cover some, all, or maybe none of those, those functions. But the Eden Prairie Community Foundation and other third parties would be able to help supplement the work associated with the trust fund if that was appropriate. So kind of in conclusion, we think that monies in an affordable housing trust fund would be a really valuable tool in a toolbox for the city to use and be able to timely and effectively react to opportunities. And it is Ann Stewart.
I'm Ann Peacock. Thanks for having all of us here this evening. I'm going to talk about our recommendations to address Goal Four, which is to address the aging housing stock and preserve and prevent the decline of naturally occurring affordable housing. As a refresher, naturally occurring affordable housing, or NOAA, is typically multifamily properties that have affordable level of rents and are not supported by any federal subsidy programs. And the task force really did analysis and recommended that because of the critical and cost-effective nature of these properties already being in the community, they're already being served by infrastructure, and sometimes they don't face the community resistance that a new project might come up against. So our recommendations really seek to expand both our, our understanding and knowledge of what exists in the community already in NOAA properties, and then ensure that we have ways to work to preserve those. So the first recommendation is to identify and document the inventory of potential multifamily NOAA properties within the city, really in anticipation and being ready. Know our inventory and being ready to have conversations with current multifamily owners about possible opportunities for preservation of those properties. So we're recommending that we purchase, the city purchases some core STAR data that will allow us to really get into the detail of understanding rent levels, location, et cetera. So really know the, the current inventory and what's available and be prepared for The second recommendation is to develop partnerships and processes with nonprofits across the Twin Cities. There are many of them that are already working with lots of communities, but by forming relationships, and I'm sure you have relationships already with some of them, but to continue to build those, those relationships and understanding of where are each of those potential nonprofits or for-profit developers that are doing this kind of work? And create kind of processes and understanding of what criteria do they have and kind of match that up with this inventory that we've built and understanding of to see if we have opportunities. And then really being ready to utilize some of the tools in the other recommendations we've made here, to really react quickly. And I think that's another step within this process, to really understand how quickly you sometimes have to be ready to react and understand and have processes and knowledge of your inventory going, going forward. The last recommendation, and while the true definition of naturally occurring affordable housing doesn't really include single-family, we had some discussion at the task force that we should also consider including the identification of single-family homes which are affordable by virtue of price and condition to be part of the city's NOAA approach. And this could potentially be done by working either with organizations that are realtor-focused or Habitat for Humanity, who has a little bit more understanding of the single-family inventory and opportunities that are available. But to include that in our thought processes within the city, so it's primarily a multifamily activity when you talk about NOAA, but also include some thoughts around single-family opportunities as well.
Senior housing's next. Hi, I'm Joanne Palmquist, and I want to add my thanks to you for giving us this opportunity to dig into this important subject and come back with some well-reasoned thoughts and recommendations. The senior housing goal listed in Aspire here talks about promoting opportunities that increase choices and enable seniors who choose to downsize their homes to age in the community. And this whole idea of aging in place, aging in the community became a major charge from you. And as we looked at, how narrow. Oops. Oopsie. So we're going to go through this whole thing again, just a second, I'll get there. Okay. The rationale behind this is since the early 2000s, there have actually been a total of 662 new senior rentals built in Eden Prairie, and there's another 100 that are now being built at Applewood Point that will be units for sale. So that, as you can see around the city, there's been quite a few developments that have come into place that are senior-focused. Obviously, as the staff works with developers, we want to encourage the developers to keep senior needs in mind, as was mentioned by the light, I'm sorry, the light rail housing units and things like that. But as we went through this then, it really became clear to us that our focus was not on building new buildings, especially with the problems with small lot sizes, but on helping keep seniors in their homes, and that's what we focused on. So the first recommendation here is to create a list of resources to seniors that they can utilize for assistance in maintaining and converting their properties to senior-friendly places. Right now, about 12% of the population of Eden Prairie is seniors over 65. That's growing, and it's growing in part as each one of us age. So we're talking about really helping the people that are now in their 50s and young 60s and maybe older know what they can do to help to stay in place, to help them with the preservation of their properties and conversion to more senior-friendly units. Some of this help already exists through organizations, the Senior Shell Prop, the Senior Emergency Repair, et cetera. So it's really about connecting people with things that are already out there that can help them, and in addition, then create and widely distribute listings of other resources. And we have a lot of ways of communicating in the city through the senior center, community center, Prop, faith-based operations. So this is really a largely education-based focus as part of the first recommendation. The second recommendation recommends that the city explore some of the other things that we've already talked about, the inclusionary housing, investigating the elder waivers and what the implications of that might be, the senior housing around the light rail. And in the next section, Emily will talk about some options and under the, under other strategies. But that we also work with Prop or another local nonprofit to test this feasibility of a home share program. Are you guys familiar with home share programs and how they work? Okay, okay. So home share programs basically match an individual usually who has an extra room or a couple of extra rooms with another person who then rents that place from them. So there are things like applications, there are background checks, all those kinds of things need to be done. For example, my mother had a friend who had MS, and she was matched with a woman who was about to become homeless because she'd gotten divorced. They lived together for 15 years, and Margaret took care of her, the senior, in this case, my mom's friend Isabel, had companionship. She did errands for her, she shoveled the snow. It was a wonderful symbiotic relationship, and that's kind of what we're looking for. There are a lot of these going on in the country. There are at least two national registries, and there are certainly things involved. There are legal things involved about matching and everything else. But one of the other nice things that happened here is that Prop had already investigated the possibility of doing a feasibility study on this, and they're ready to do that, and they could be a very good partner with us. They made it clear when I talked to Janet Palmer that she does not want to run this long-term, but they certainly would be interested in working with us to do a feasibility study. So elder waivers, as I said, and then working on the home share. The last recommendation under the senior housing section is we recommend a partnership with Habitat for Humanity as related to their Age Well program. In the appendix that you got, there's an article about this Age Well program. In the first 18 months, Habitat was able to go into seniors' homes and retrofit them for more senior-friendly living at the cost of about $8,500 per home, and that allowed those 65 seniors to stay in their homes. It's a fairly new program, and they are looking for partners to help work with that, and we think that this would be a great initiative to look into, to see if we could possibly use this to help our seniors stay in their place. All of these things are really related to helping seniors in Eden Prairie stay, Eden Prairie residents.
Before I briefly discuss tenant protection ordinances, I want to say what a pleasure it's been working with this dedicated, committed group of residents here. It's really been a pleasure acting as the city's staff liaison for them. So the tenant protection ordinances section falls under Goal Number One, which is to incentivize attainable and affordable housing options for lower-income households so they can move and remain in Eden Prairie. This really pertains to the remain in Eden Prairie part. As you'll probably recall, tenant protection ordinances are put in place to protect tenants in buildings that have been recently purchased and might be upgraded or rebranded. So they, it's tenant protection, I'll discuss basically what it is here. So the task force recommends, recommending adopting a tenant protection ordinances, which would be triggered by the sale of a multifamily rental property. Task force also recommends that landlords in Eden Prairie provide each tenant a written notice of tenant rights at the time that a lease or a lease extension is signed. This, I think, is a really good idea because it's a kind of a low-cost measure that the city could put together, a resource for this, and then find the appropriate intervention point to have that tenant rights document go to those tenants so they understand what their rights are. Task force further encourages Eden Prairie to investigate and, if possible, leverage inspections of rental properties performed by other groups, I'll discuss this more in a moment, and to incorporate inspections with very short notice into its inspection process, if that's indeed possible. So who's been enacting tenant protection ordinances? Locally, we know that at least Brooklyn Center, Bloomington, Golden Valley, St. Louis Park, and Richfield have enacted them. I had the opportunity to speak with my peers in Bloomington, Golden Valley, and St. Louis Park. In their experience thus far, these tenant protection ordinances seem to be working. No one has had to pay a fine for violating the tenant protection provisions. So these are typically protecting tenants of sold NOAA properties, which you just heard about from Ann, for a specified time period, usually 90 days. I believe that all of the communities that I mentioned do have a 90-day period. The types of protection that are included would include prohibition on rescreening tenants. So you can't say, well, before we accepted Section 8 housing vouchers, now we don't do that anymore, you're gone. Prohibition on substantial rent increases, so likewise, you can't come in and just arbitrarily raise the rates dramatically. Evictions allowed only for cause. The most classic example of cause would be non-payment of rent, so it has to be for a legitimate reason if you plan to evict someone. And then timely required notice of sale to tenants and city, and this generally, from what we're seeing, is usually a period of 30 days. And it's estimated there are about 20 or so properties in Eden Prairie that are under potential threat. And the way that I kind of analyzed this and helped inform the task force on this was looking at their status as to whether they were a Class A, Class B, or Class C city. The buildings that are lost through purchases of NOAA properties typically tend to be Class B and Class C properties, so a little bit older, a little bit more rundown in a lot of cases. And then looking at their value per unit and things of that nature. So there's a certain typology that national and international capital interests are looking for, a certain type of building that they're really craving, the ones that they can buy cheap and, and then start raising rents on and make a lot, a lot of money doing it. So here's a small chart that shows you kind of how the tenant protection ordinance is recommended to be run. It would apply to any multifamily property of at least four units, where at least 20% of the units are at or below 80% of area median income. This is a little different from most of our peers in that most of them set the level at 60% of area median income, so a little bit lower. Brooklyn Center has set theirs at 80%. And the reason that the housing task force is recommending this is because Eden Prairie has kind of a upper-end housing stock in a lot of cases, and we want to make sure we can not only protect, protect the really low-income tenants, but also some more moderate or upper-to-lower income residents as well. Tenant protection period, just like other cities in the area, we're recommending 90 days. The new ownership prohibitions would be rescreening of tenants based on new rental eligibility criteria, eviction without legitimate cause such as non-payment of rent, or forcing material changes to existing leases. In terms of the notice of transfer of ownership, the task force recommends that that would be within 30 days of sale to tenants in the city and be provided in a wide variety of languages that we have spoken here in Eden Prairie. The fine for the violation likewise is pretty similar to other communities in the area. It would be a payment to affected low-income tenants of three months' rent, paid within 30 days if the tenant terminates the lease, or the day the tenant vacates if the owner terminates, excuse me. And then on the rent increase, which, as we discussed in the council workshop, is a pretty crucial part of such an ordinance, trying to prevent somebody from coming in and just raising the rents as a matter of course, unfortunately, because we're a Class B statutory city, we, we've been told that we cannot prohibit rent increases as that could be construed as a form of rent control. So that's a little bit of a nick on this type of ordinance if we chose to adopt it, but we still feel that the other... of ordinance if we chose to adopt it, but we still feel that the other protections afforded would be worthwhile in adopting tenant protection.
Jonathan, a question.
Please.
In that one, I see all the language except Indian. Is there a reason not to have a translation for Indian language?
There's no intentional omission, certainly. We can certainly add that to the list as well.
Thank you.
The tenant rights document that I spoke about, the task force recommends creating and widely distributing a tenant rights documents that articulates both tenants' and landlords' rights and responsibilities. This would include info on the tenant protection ordinance if enacted, and it would include legal and advocacy organization information for referrals, organizations we commonly make referrals to such as HomeLine and Legal Aid. As I was thinking about this this afternoon, I actually saw that it might be a smart strategy to have two separate documents, one being just a straightforward tenant rights document so that this would be applicable for all multifamily buildings that are sold, whereas the tenant protection ordinance mostly applies to those NOA properties. So, it might be wise to separate those and have them both handed out in that situation. And then finally, the task force had a healthy dialogue about inspection protocols, and these are really more questions asked about the city for further conversation. One idea that the task force had was to explore leveraging other entities' inspection reports, such as HUD and Minnesota Housing Finance Agency. In the case of those two agencies, my previous experience showed that they actually did combine their efforts so that they would get results from each other's inspections and be able to kind of leverage them or maybe even accept as their own the results of somebody else's inspection. Now, those are two very large organizations, and they have large portfolios, so it may be more fruitful in that case than it would for a smaller community to work with one of them. They also discussed discussing the inspection schedule. Is it similar to our peer communities? Is it more or less frequent? If it's less frequent, is there an opportunity to have a tighter inspection schedule to make sure, it kind of relates to this last bullet point, which is, are there any opportunities for sort of short notice inspections? We weren't quite sure what the law was around that, but the idea being to avoid owners from getting by with last-minute touch-ups once they've been notified that there's going to be an inspection coming.
We already have an inspection situation where every unit gets inspected, what, every four years?
Agreed.
And we can go in more often than that with complaints. So, I think we're a fair distance ahead of many areas, and we already have our inspection protocols that I don't want to change those except to maybe allow them to go in quickly. You know, we've had complaints from certain buildings, and I believe we sent inspectors in quite quickly in on some of them. I definitely want to keep that because it guarantees all buildings don't have mold and all those kinds of things. You know, more is good, but I don't want to throw out with what we have.
And I don't think that's the task force's recommendation necessarily, but I do appreciate that point and agree that, you know, it's, again, this was just a conversation point among amongst the Housing Task Force. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Emily.
Good evening. My name's Emily, and I think all of the task force members would agree with me. We really enjoyed working with Jonathan as our staff liaison too, so just want to share the honor back. So, yeah, my section will be just kind of a compilation of other strategies for achieving the goals laid out in the Aspire 2040 Plan. And specifically, we're looking at goal number two in a lot of ways, which is to foster a diverse range of partnerships with private and public sectors and just to also encourage community buy-in for the goals we're discussing tonight. So, our number, our first goal is to strongly recommend that Eden Prairie investigate all the various other strategies that I'm about to bring up, including accessory dwelling units and a feasible investigating other partnerships to try out some of these other options. And while we are calling this section out-of-the-box strategies in a lot of ways, we're kind of harkening back to the ways we used to see other urban neighborhoods develop and kind of expand and adapt over time to a lot of range, along, a wider range of needs. So, the first one I'll talk about is accessory dwelling units. That's kind of its formal term. Sometimes they're called carriage homes or granny flats and law apartments. And these are spaces that are adjacent or attached to a primary home, and they have their own entrance, kitchen, living area, and bathroom. So, essentially, they can be on the side of a home or just elsewhere on the property, but it's a way of adding additional living space to existing property. There are 18 cities in our metro area that already do allow these units in some form, including Minnetonka, Minneapolis, Plymouth, Apple Valley, and Lakeville. And so, just knowing that we're kind of, could become part of a group of communities that are already doing this, it allows for a lot of peer sharing and learning to know what's been successful in their community and maybe ways they would have changed or, you know, tweaked their policy that we could learn from. There's a number of benefits to this approach for housing, especially in a community like Eden Prairie. Kind of wanting to link back to what we've discussed before, there's not a lot of big pieces of land for development available on Eden Prairie, but we do have a lot of established neighborhoods with larger lot sizes and single-family homes. And so, when you approach accessory dwelling units, it's a way of adding density to a community in a really gentle way, as our report states, and meeting some of the needs that we've found are a priority for our community, especially acknowledging lifecycle housing, being able to provide homes for seniors. And a lot of times, these units can be housing for family members who can be caring for seniors also, and just a range of different family sizes and family stages. So, it's a great opportunity for young adults who are pursuing education or for families of small sizes, one-to-two-person households. Also, in certain cases, kind of depending on the cost of developing these units, it can actually provide two more affordable housing units as the unit itself can provide supplemental income to the main property. So, that can be really exciting as an opportunity to have two different households with more affordable housing in a community. They can add value to the property, increase some property tax revenue, and again, they are small, so they're serving a smaller household segment that's typically a growing population segment also. For this to be possible, it would require zoning changes to allow, to allow for this, and the task force did recommend that the city council, in considering those zoning changes, kind of pay attention to maintaining ownership of the, of the main property to which the ADU is linked. I'm going to move, actually, I'm not going to move on to home share programs because my colleague did an amazing job discussing that one already when we were discussing senior, senior living. So, the next kind of out-of-the-box opportunity is micro homes. And so, these are a way of having more affordable homes without a subsidy, just because the size is smaller, so 400 to 800 square feet. So, that can be offered for potentially lower rents without additional subsidy. This is another way of maybe maximizing housing around the light rail. It could be a great opportunity for singles or couples without children, where they're kind of excited to get around town and do other things and don't need as much space. The next opportunity that we're recommending is to look at land leases and community land trusts, and this is an avenue for promoting long-term affordable homeownership within the community. We are recommending working with various nonprofits such as Habitat for Humanity, Homes Within Reach, also called the West Hennepin Land Trust, Common Bond, and Aon, who can provide a model where the homeowner who's purchasing a home, they are just purchasing the structure, and the nonprofit owns the land and can lease that. And so, especially in our community with land costs being so high, that's an avenue for a more affordable homeownership opportunity. And this is something that was kind of brought up as a way of using the Affordable Housing Land Trust too, that can help kind of offset the cost of land so that these nonprofits can continue to do business with our community. The next one is the single-room occupancy housing. And so, Eden Prairie has had a couple different nonprofit groups provide housing where families or whatever the target population may be has a room in a home, and then there's shared community spaces. So, the kitchen may be shared, the laundry may be shared. Full disclosure, I have been a staff person in one of these programs for the past two years, so I too shared my kitchen and everything and had my own room alongside pregnant women who are being supported through Esther Homes. And then onward, Eden Prairie is another example of this in our community that's working with young adults. These programs have seen success, especially with such a highly collaborative nonprofit community and really welcoming community here, and just providing a safe space and more affordable housing options for people who want to become established in this community. One key piece for the success of these programs is a better integrated transportation network. And so, we are leaving this up here as an exciting option as we kind of look forward to the finishing of the light rail and just seeing how that can continue to leverage additional housing opportunities. The next bullet point is about the need for units that support large families with larger bedroom sizes. There's been a number of advocacy events specifically bringing up the needs and experiences for the Somali community here, as well as many other families who just don't always fit the profile of what typical affordable units are, yet we really, in accordance with that aspire plan, want them to come to our community and remain here. So, one discussion point we had had in a meeting was that partial, a way to meet the requirement for an inclusionary zoning policy in terms of providing a number of affordable units could be to provide these larger units that when a family doesn't need that many bedrooms could be collapsed back into two separate units. So, essentially, you might get credit, credit for two units by providing this unique need for, yeah, for housing in Eden Prairie. And then, the last piece is zoning. This is pretty broad, but we already brought up one example of where the zoning code could change, and that would be for allowing the ADUs. Other examples are just to consider kind of creative ways of increasing density in certain areas of the city. I know in one of our early meetings as a task force, there was a developer very interested in what's called like the missing middle type housing, which is just finding ways to have single families become duplexes or other really low number of multi-unit homes within a community in a way that transportation and all of those things can still function well in that community, but we're able to get more housing. Okay, I think that is a brief summary of our additional strategies. And kind of our final, or my final piece, I think there's something after me, is just a communication strategy. And maybe you're kind of thinking, "Why do we need communication?" We're talking about affordable housing, but I think we are in a time of a lot of contention, and as I'm sure you all have experienced even more than us, any housing project that comes forth can sometimes be subject to a lot of disagreement or even confusion on what affordable housing even means. And I know as a task force member, I kind of like to bring everything back to the Aspire 2040 Plan, and that goal number one was about incentivizing housing so that low-income residents can move to Eden Prairie and remain in Eden Prairie. And I think that was such an inspiring kind of mandate for me as a task force member because there was no qualifier around that low-income piece. Like, we are in a time, that's an unprecedented year, as the term has been, where we are really celebrating essential workers in our community. And part of why our goal is with communication is to reduce stigma around who benefits from affordable housing strategies. And I think for us to just take a moment to consider, do the essential workers providing what we need at this time, can they live in our community? And how can we just help our community members understand who does need affordable housing and who benefits from that and who gets to stay and contribute? And that can be the nurses, that's the early childcare workers who are watching the nurses' children, that is firefighters and other city employees. So many people are contributing to our community in absolutely essential, critical ways. And to have strategies that allow them to remain and continue to do their work, we just want to shift that narrative so that there's community buy-in. And so, that's a big piece of what our communication plan is. It also falls under goal two of Aspire, which is just to foster a whole wide range of partnerships and community buy-in. So, kind of, there's two pieces. I don't have a lot of details on my slides, but we are recommending strongly that the city of Eden Prairie develop and implement a communication strategy associated with housing and all of the recommendations we've made to create buy-in from the community. And as I already mentioned, one key piece of that communication strategy would be in reducing stigma around who benefits from affordable housing and also what benefit economically diverse housing brings to, to the entire community of Eden Prairie. And when we're speaking about diversity, we mean it across age, across lifestyle, across racial and cultural background, linguistic background, and economic and professional background as well. And so, one of the messages of the task force kind of in making this recommendation is that economically diverse housing is stabilizing, and it also enriches our community and fosters opportunity for understanding for the long-term of the community. Another key piece of this communication strategy is just to leverage language that's already in place across the metro with housing advocacy groups and development groups. It's kind of called the three Ps: protection, production, and preservation. And you've heard a lot kind of that fall under those. So, we want to protect tenants, we want to protect others who are vulnerable in their housing, we want to produce housing that meets a wide range of needs, and then we want to preserve what we already have in our housing stock so that as we produce, there's not a zero-sum game. We want to continue moving forward accomplishing those goals. So, a communication, a communication strategy that helps people kind of latch on to those three core ideas will help them connect the work in their community to what's happening around the metro and just provide common language for the types of housing needs and programs that they might see in their community. And then, one of the last pieces is just to continue to highlight the programs that are already available, city programs that help Eden Prairie residents purchase and preserve their homes. Possibly as kind of a subset of this, we would recommend an elevator speech that really captures the values of this community, linking that to the housing programs we want to see, and having that available in multiple languages too, just so there's some quick messaging that kind of helps build some momentum for these programs. And then, that was kind of our communication strategy. And then, one other piece of this communication plan is like another opportunity for a type of partnership that can sort of create capacity in community for understanding and working through some of the contention that can exist around housing, and it's the use of mediation services. Mediation might be kind of an unfamiliar concept, but it's essentially upholding the ability of individuals and communities to resolve their own disputes effectively and expansively and peacefully through trained mediators who are trained to be neutral and facilitate conversations where there's complexity and conflict. This is being used by other cities across the country, and it's also being used in communities right in our own metro to reduce the strain on city resources, staff time, and even tax dollars to kind of bring consensus around city goals and create better proposals that can be pushed forward. Mediators are trained culturally specifically in communication, and they are often recruited to be representative of that community racially, ethnically, linguistically also, just so that there's the most possibility for creative solutions to take place. So, mediation can support several of the recommendations we've already highlighted. One of those pieces is for renters or landlords to have access to mediators and mediation services to facilitate some problem solving so that evictions are reduced. That's one of the most common ways that mediation services are being used across the metro right now. And it's a low-cost strategy. No one is turned away for their run as nonprofits, so no one's turned away as, for inability to pay for those services. And so, it's a kind of a great addition for landlords and tenants both to be aware of. The second piece is that mediation is being used to complement traditional public processes when there is a housing development that is maybe just causing some conflict in a neighborhood or neighbors want to be more fully like heard in their concerns or have ideas for what it could look like. By the time something gets to a planning zoning commission or to all of you, there's, there's only whatevers in your purview for what can take place regarding that proposal. But mediation offers an opportunity for some more creative problem solving. And oh, one example that I've seen in a community, there was a church that was going to expand a parking lot, and the neighborhood was very upset about it. And in a mediation process, they found out that if the people attending the church just simply waved and acknowledged the neighbors, that was all they wanted to feel okay with the expansion of the development. That's a super simple, happy example, but just to know that sometimes there's creative solutions outside of what we typically see in existing public processes. It can be just a nice group to link arms with as, as the leaders of, of the community and just have, create more successful projects. And over time, as a community has more successful housing projects And over time, as a community has more successful housing projects take place, there's less resistance ideally. So in, in the metro now mediation is alive, and while the Conflict Resolution Center is one of several groups that are using mediation services specifically to accomplish housing goals. And so in another suburban community, they are facilitating, facilitating dialogues on race, and they also have helped facilitate some large dialogues with neighbors in Minneapolis around their 2040 planning process. So that was in a little bit past, in the past. But again, just bringing more community voices to the public planning process. And as I mentioned, they do a lot of successful tenant landlord negotiations to prevent evictions and stabilize the community. I'm not, who am I handing this off to? I'm handing it back off to Joan.
Okay, next steps. You can look at that picture, and it could either be a really high staircase up, which might be a good thing, that we're heading towards something bigger and better and grander and accomplishing our goals. It could also be like, okay, we got all of this, and now we just need to take a nice stroll down those steps. Either way, we want to say the next steps are into the future, so they're going to be all positive and wonderful. So our task force recommends three things. Number one, we would strongly recommend acceptance of this report and all of the recommendations Number two, as these various recommendations are further discussed and explored by city council and mayor and staff, the task force recommends that a new or continued subset of this task force, I can't believe I'm saying this, that a new or continued subset of this task force can be convened to assist the city staff in further researching and evaluating those recommendations that require additional investigation or consideration and operationalizing various recommendations and the development of communication strategies. So we're recommending that we're not just going to, that we, that you consider having some more help as we move along into the future with these. And then finally, a request. The task force respectfully requests a follow-up meeting or communications with mayor and city council to be informed of the mayor and council's decisions, including next steps. And then finally, a thank you. So I had to write this down because I didn't want to miss anything here. So first, we just want to say a really big thank you. And we want to thank Amanda Palowski, who was with us every month and took such impeccable minutes and for her dedication to communication with this very busy and diverse group of task force members. She never gave up on us as she reached out with things. And we also want to thank Amanda for rescuing us when our final draft, the footnotes disappeared, and Amanda rescued us and was able to solve the footnotes and put them back in the draft. So. And then secondly, thank you, really doesn't seem like enough to say to you, Jonathan Stanley, for your role as the staff liaison to this task force. Your knowledge and wisdom and experience and good humor and deep respect for the work that we were tasked with brought us to this finish line with a sense of team and integrity and completion. So thank you very much. Okay, so I want to say also a very special thanks to the team, to Carol Bombin, to Ann Peacock, to Emily Siple, Marlene Fisher, Lyndon Moquess, Ken Robinson, Joanne Palmquist, and Terri Farley. This task force, I want to say thank you for your dedication and the special gifts of curiosity and your belief in our shared work. And I want to give particular thanks to Joanne and Terri, who poured countless hours into creating the written report that you see, that you've gotten, and they've captured our meetings and our conversations really completely. So thank you both for that additional really amazing work that you did. We thank Rick Getchow and Janet Jeremiah for helping us get launched and for checking in with us along the way and for encouraging us to keep going. And finally, we thank you, Mayor Case, and council members Aho, Nelson, Freiberg, and Narayan for entrusting us with this task, for your sincere attention and questions along the way. And, okay, so dare I say, I want to thank you for taking this report now and enacting as much of these policies as you possibly can in order for us to realize the goals that we have for our beloved Eden Prairie community. Thank you. Thank you all.
I just, without being redundant with the thank yous, I want to say this is a big deal. This is a really big deal, not just that it came out so strongly from the 2018 campaign of four of us sitting up here who were running at the time, and, and the sense that the timeliness of what's happening in the region and, and 2020 and all its flaming glory this year has so validated and confirmed that you all were doing really good work in the right place at the right time. So I can assure you that the results to what you have presented tonight will get more than just seriously considered. I, I wrote down and I'll share with them momentarily, but share them with you, but many things I'm sure will get enacted. Might be tweaked, might be changed, something, there's, you know, there's political ramifications in a positive way. I'm, I'm a pro-political, to me, politics is representation of the people. It's very complicated. If it was easy, you know, we'd all, we'd all be doing it in a very easy way. But nonetheless, what you have presented is so helpful. And, and I will say, it, it met and far exceeded in, in many ways what I had hoped. So that's, so thank you. And Joan, I think we chose the right person in you to lead it. I think we chose the right people to support you and the right staff person. Yeah, we can clap. I, I just want to say that, and this is, all, all tonight we're going to do is just accept the report. I know that you'd like us to accept and the recommendations. We're going to spend some time on those and making sure that we've got the right mix and, and all that. I, I again can very confidently say many, many, many of your recommendations, I feel, are going, very confident that they'll get enacted. I just want to say I liked what you came back with, the inclusionary housing piece, the way you've worded it, the way it's sensitive. There are some things I want Eden Prairie to be out there, number one, I want us to be number one all the time, but there are some things I want us to be leading the charge. Others, I want to wait to see how it plays out there because we have our residents that also want to, we need them to be very supportive of what we do. This is one of those cases, inclusionary housing, where I'd like to see how it works. I think we're having good evidence now. We've got, we've got enough to move on this, so I, my opinion. So I like the inclusionary housing, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, I think is a great idea. Partnering with the Eden Prairie Community Foundation, definitely excited about that. Partnerships with nonprofits, companies, you know, really across the country, but the region with NOAA and, and seeing what we can preserve across Eden Prairie. The resource list for seniors, I'm not sure what we have already, but a, a great idea to absolutely expand on that to keep people in their homes. Really like the partnership idea with Habitat for Humanity, which we've already, we have a couple of experiences of already partnering with Habitat over the last couple decades. Tenant Protection Ordinance, I, I want to really carefully look at that. I, I like a lot of it. At the very, very minimum, having the written notification part, which one would assume is happening, but I'm guessing not since it's in here. So there's all kinds of pieces of that that I think are really interesting. And then I've always been intrigued with the accessory dwelling units. It's interesting that when Minneapolis changes, changed its zoning to allow double whatever's on their lots at the moment, if you've ever tried to park down there, they can't park them now. Now granted, things will change as maybe, you know, electric cars and whatever, we don't know down the road. But we could in Eden Prairie, we have many, many half-acre lots, and we're able to consider looking at this. I'm, I'm intrigued by that. So I'll look at the home share piece as well, but there's other outside the box too. So really nice job presenting, every one of you, quality presenters, so thank you. Council, any comments before we take, before I entertain a motion on accepting this report? Comments? Councilmember Nelson?
I too would like to thank you. You've come up with a lot of ideas I hadn't thought of before. You've come up with other ideas that I had thought of and given them voice, which I appreciate. Thank you so much. I think this was really needed for the city to come up with a lot of ideas and things that we can start one by one, putting into law, putting into place, maybe two by two or three by three. But it's given us the starting place, and so I can see that we can have a finish since we have a place to start, and you provided that. And it was so necessary. I do agree with you that we need some kind of ongoing something rather, maybe the mayor gets to figure that one out. But it's, it's more information than I expected, and the knowledge of so many people coming together to put in the ideas, people from realtors and from social service and just plain residents, you've come up with a fantastic report. And some of it blends in easily and will be a short step, others will be a little bigger step to get to it. But I see us being able to implement a lot of this in the next couple of years. It won't all happen in January. Some of it might have to happen after we can have bigger groups of people talking without masks and without limits on how close they can be. One hopes that somewhere in the next six to eight months, I wish it was one, you know, we'll be able to do that again. We just have to deal with COVID. But I, I think most of the basics are met, and when we hear a new idea that's not here, I think we'll recognize it better because of all the ideas you've come up with and certainly have forced me to start thinking of possibilities and, you know, seeing where they go and what we in fact can do and maybe what we can encourage our legislators to do to help us do something more in the future. So thank you so much. I know you've spent hours, I've known you've spent probably some sleepless nights trying to figure out a piece that you're working on, but we do appreciate it.
Councilmember Freiberg?
I also want to, want to thank you for your hard work on it. I sat in a number of those meetings, sat in there, and I did, sometimes I said something, sometimes I didn't. And I suppose a lot of people might have been wondering what I was even thinking. But I encourage you to think beyond the box. I think you all heard that from me before, that don't look necessarily just at the easy thing. This is during the time Minneapolis was going through a lot and as far as changes in what they were doing. And, you know, I think I use the term baby steps too. I think there's two words I use, but think beyond the box. And what you did is that you put together a pretty darn good presentation, there's no doubt about it. You thought beyond the box, and I thank you all very much.
Councilmember Narayan?
Thank you, Mayor. I think what you guys have done is amazing. It is one of the complex scenario that you broke down into simple steps, simple recommendation. I really want to recommend, I really want to congratulate all of you for that. It, it's amazing job you've done. Just want to share with you one experience I have, home sharing. When I came here in 1972, I landed in Boston and drove to Gardner, Mass., and the first place I stayed was a family's house on the attic paying $15 a week. And family sharing, if, if I had to go rent an apartment at that time, I wouldn't have been able to do that. And I could use their kitchen, I could use their bathroom, and even their fridge, and, but I used to pay $15 a, a week. And so it, it is a great concept, and students and kids out of college, so a lot of recommendation here, like everybody else said, you know, I, this is a great work you all done, and I really want to say thank you.
Councilmember Aho?
I'll just add my thanks as well. You've done a fabulous job, as everyone said, and we so appreciate all of your time and efforts, and they will, they will impact our, our decision-making process, so thank you.
And I really like the idea of calling you back together when we do have some type of, there will be, I'm imagining here, I'm guessing I'm talking out loud, but some type of a subset of plan that at some point, several months down the way, maybe gets solidified. Little pieces of it may be ongoing in approval the next couple of years, but I can see something coming out where we check some boxes, and we'll, we'll pull you back together at that point and, and definitely have you part of that. And, and I do agree that there's also possibly the need, I know Councilmember Freiberg during his campaign talked about a housing commission. We weren't ready for that quite yet, but there may be some look at that ongoing too. I, I do think something could be ongoing to assist staff as we roll this out. I think we need some feedback from staff next to try to figure out what you think is needed next. Okay, council, is there a motion to accept this incredible?
I move to accept the housing task force written report that contained the task force's housing recommendation to the city council.
Second? There's second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, thank you, thank you again. Appreciate that. And one more clap. Absolutely. All right. Moving on, we have not too much of a further agenda here. So is there a motion? Well, first, let me ask, any thing on the consent calendar you'd like to further question or pull temporarily? If not, could I have a motion to receive, accept the consent calendar? Or approve it, I guess, is the motion, so.
I move approval of the items A through M on the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on, we've got payment of claims. Any items that you, as you peruse through, that you wanted to question? If not, is there a motion to approve the payment of claims as submitted?
Move to approve the payment of claims as submitted.
There's second?
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. All right, moving on down, we have the report of city manager, Mr. Getchow.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Last item of the night, we have before, to bring before you some refunding of debt, refinancing of debt. We have several different bond issues between 2010 and 2012 that we can call in the current time period. So we're asking to refinance some debt. We're looking at saving just over $300,000. So this is a reissuance, a refinancing of debt to save the city money. So we have with us Bruce Kimmel from Ellers and Associates. He's our financial advisor, and he worked on this refinancing, and he will address the council on the details.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Bruce Kimmel with Ellers. It's a pleasure to be here with you. I do quite a few Zoom calls. It's actually nice to be back in person with a governing body, seeing you face to face. So thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for allowing us to help you with this refinancing. Mr. Getchow did a nice job of describing it, and we have great news to share with you. As, as Mr. Getchow mentioned, there are four bonds outstanding that are all callable and redeemable for interest cost savings here in the next couple of months. So we decided to take a look at bundling them together into one common refinancing. Worked with Ms. Kocheever and her team on that as well. And as you can see from this competitive sale summary, we solicited bids from banks for this financing. So unlike most city bond issues, when you go to the public markets and get affirmation of your AAA ratings from S&amp;P and Moody's, we decided it was going to be more advantageous, given the size and the relative short duration of this bond issue, to just go directly to banks and see what they could do. And the nice thing about with a bank placement is if we And the nice thing about with a bank placement is if we decided the bids weren't good enough, you can easily reject that, whereas if you go to the full bond market and you decide to reject, there tends to be some negative consequences. So it was really a low-risk proposition. So we received, we solicited bids from 15 different banks on your behalf, and we received six proposals, which we thought was a great return. And of those, US Bank, with whom you already have an existing banking relationship, had the lowest overall interest rate, and really the other terms and conditions were also advantageous to the city. So we did recommend that the city proceed with the US Bank proposal, and we got the last few terms and conditions of that worked out earlier today. So, Mr. Mayor and council, I'll just note, as again, as Mr. Getchow mentioned, when you compare the old debt service to the new debt service, the city will be saving over $330,000 with this refinancing on an apples-to-apples basis. Really quickly, I would draw your attention to the bid summary. Not as much information on this as we usually have, but wanted to draw your attention to the interest rates from US Bank and the other proposals that were received on the city's behalf. And then finally, if you have any questions about the new debt structure, you'll still use the same repayment mechanisms that you've been using. For the first two purposes, those are being paid with special assessments on benefited properties, and then the refinancing of the two bonds from 2012 will be paid with general property tax levy dollars. And finally, if you go to the last page, you can see the savings in the right-hand column. We decided after consulting with city staff that it would be advantageous to move the last maturity of the 2012 B bonds up by a year, so we're actually shortening the repayment term on the city's debt. But doing that, of course, costs more money in the short term, right? So what we did is basically take advantage of the savings that you're achieving with the first three bond issues to be able to afford a little bit faster prepayment or repayment on the 2012 B bonds, and that is allowing you to see, as you can, as you can see, save about $290,000 in that last year. So I would welcome any questions you have, and if you have no questions, thank you again for this opportunity, and I'd ask you to consider the resolution in front of you, awarding the bonds to US Bank.
Council, any questions?
The $315,000, what period did that saving is?
It's purely a function of replacing the old interest rates with new lower interest rates on the bonds.
So that's over the period of time rather than immediate?
It's all over a period of time, right? You're saving a little bit of money for the first four years, or five years, rather, and then a much larger lump sum by, again, shortening one of the bonds by a year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Oh, thank you. As Ms. Kocivar mentioned.
Oh, please, hold on, hold on that.
The bond amount is changed from the agenda. It's the final amount in the resolution that Dorsey and Whitney, your bond councils have prepared, is $7,417,000, a little bit higher than the original estimate, but overall, the savings are right at what we had projected.
Whoever makes the motion, just put the new number in.
What's the new number?
$7,417,000. Do you want to make the motion?
Sure. I move to adopt a resolution relating to $7,417,000 general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2020A, authorizing the issuance, awarding the sale, fixing the form and details, and providing the execution and delivery thereof, and the security thereof, and levying ad valorem taxes for the payment thereof.
Second.
Any further discussion, questions?
Just, just one. Yes, Mayor, thank you. Just one comment. I think the residents need to know, the reason we're getting this good rate is because our AAA bond rating and other good work we do as a city, and that's the reason we keep on getting good rating and able to save this, this amount of money. Am I right?
I'm happy to answer that point. Yes, councilmember, you are absolutely right. Although these, this bond issue itself wasn't rated, and that was part of the reason we decided to do this bank process, because it takes a lot of staff effort to go through that rating affirmation process. Absolutely, even though these ratings weren't, these bonds weren't rated, the banks looked very closely at your existing ratings that were for last fall, and that's a huge reason why they were so comfortable proposing the interest rates that they did. And that will just, you know, continue to pay dividends, especially when you have financing in 2021 and beyond.
Thank you, and also thank you for the finance staff and city staff. Thank you.
It's a great clarification. I mean, it is because things are going so well and that we are financially so strong that we're able to get even better interest rates and save more money. It's just all snowballs positively in our favor.
0.85% is a pretty fabulous rate.
It's getting pretty close to zero, yes. All right, we've had a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right. We have gotten to the end of our meeting. If there's nothing else to come before the council this evening, is there?
I move to adjourn the city council meeting.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. This meeting is adjourned.